Welcoming diverse and equitable community where all people can access tools and opportunities to improve their quality of life, allowing them to reach their full potential. During its meetings, the Paulsboro City Council will use this lens to inclusively view its discussions and actions. And Mr. Tabor, would you like to do the land acknowledgement, please?
Happily, Mayor. Paulsboro is located on the ancestral lands of the indigenous Sioux Kwamish people, for whom this place was known as Tuk Tuk Lats, or the land of the vine maples. Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hollowed by some happy or some sad or happy event and days long vanished. A quote from Chief Seattle, 1854.
Thank you. Now would you rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye.
What I do is just through the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, all who stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda is to review and approve the agenda. I understand we're pulling item 11B, which is in our workshop, and that is the Housing Kitsap Nordic Cottage Management Agreement and Tenant Selection. We'll move that to the next meeting. And other than that, the agenda is as stands, and so I would entertain a motion for approval.
Madam Mayor, move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. We have a motion and second. Ms. Crowe?
Crowe, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Agger, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Liddell, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, Council. Oh, I'm sorry. Doug, apologize. Mr. Newell? He was there. Mr. Newell is vacationing, and so he's somewhere remote. Well, I'm not seeing him, so let's just, let's just keep moving on. There he is. We just approved the agenda, Doug. Do you, do you approve of our agenda as amended? No sound. Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment. And if you have comment for the Council, please step to the podium. You have three minutes and state your name for the record.
Okay, folks, it is 5:30, and we have returned from our executive session.
Good evening, Council members and Mayor Erickson.
The next thing on the agenda is Mayor's Reports and Council Comments.
My name is Carolyn Zimmer. I'm here to talk about a resolution that I submitted to the Council and Mayor earlier today. Right to Sue the Federal Government: Resolution to Give Washington State Residents a Meaningful Remedy for Violations of Their Constitutional Rights under V- 42 USC 1983, which allows persons whose constitutional rights are violated by state actors to sue for damages, but no statute exists to allow Washingtonians to pursue such claims against federal actors, aka the Trump Administration and their thugs. We are requesting such a law at the state level. And last month I was here and I asked the City Council to create an ordinance that would require any law enforcement action to have the agents or the individuals show their face, have uniforms and badges, so that we would know who might be in our community rounding up people and know that that was lawful and not unconstitutional. And so that was not going to be allowed, or it can't be done apparently at that level. So going to the state level is perfectly legal to do that. And so I drafted this resolution with help of legal counsel. And you have a copy of it, and I have the two reports back there. If people want to look at it and even sign, we have over almost 80 signatures now. So after all the whereases on the resolution, therefore be it resolved that the Paulsboro City Council and Mayor of Paulsboro ask the Washington State Representatives and the State Senator of the 23rd Legislative District and all other members of the State Legislature to propose support and pass appropriate legislation creating an individual right of action for damages against the federal government and federal actors for violations of federal constitutional rights, which may take a form similar, and I gave you some examples of that. And be it resolved that the Paulsboro City Council and Mayor of Paulsboro shall sign these, this document and send it via email to the Washington State Representatives and the State Senator of the 23rd Legislative District and all members of the State Legislature. I do have legal counsel that can come and talk to you and explain to this, who's quite an expert on this. And actually, if you send it up to Senator Hanson, he is well aware of what this is all about. He doesn't need anything explained to him. But we need to get our bill through the State Legislature this year to protect our constitutional rights at the state level. Thank you.
Comments from citizens?
I give these to the council.
Just give them to the clerk.
Okay, I have the my, the reason I'm here, my name's Dolores Lynch, and the reason I'm here is regarding the disgusting dumpsters to the left of JJ's Fish House Marina parking. And I can't believe it's been left in this condition for so, so long. I took some pictures and had them duplicated in color for the City Council to see. I can't, can't, I don't know why this is allowed. Paulsboro residents and visitors to Paulsboro, because we're a destination town, get to look at that distasteful scene while seeking a parking place near the marina. These, these pictures that I had done at Blue Sky Printing, they're in living color, so you can see it perfectly. And other places like behind, behind the Loft and Juicy's Burgers, they have a fence like across so that you don't have to look at that disgusting thing. And so does Tapas Bar and Bara de Bistro, and it's very attractive over there, too. And I would like the I, I would like the City Council to contact, if it's the mentors or whatever, but it's so bad, I can't believe that the City Council hasn't done anything about it yet. So that's my problem. It's a real bad problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. Comments from citizens?
Hello. Good evening, Council members, Madam Mayor. My name's Annette Atkinson. I'm the owner and founder of Highway 420. And I'm here with some info, a big thank you, and an invite. I know there's a lot of things that go on in Washington, so I just wanted to make sure you are aware of two cannabis tax bills that highly affect you. One is to get more money in your jurisdiction, local jurisdiction, from the state dollars. That one's been in committee and it's kind of on a hold, so it's not, it's not where my focus is, but I did support it, and probably a little push might be helpful to get those dollars to you folks. There's a second bill that is going to be up in January, which is to, to increase just the bottom line tax dollars, up from the 37.5% to a higher number. When that happens, there'll be less discretionary dollars, which means less dollars for your local taxes. So it might be a really good time if the Council is interested in going and pushing for them to give you more money. I like to be a good part. We like to support you folks, and I think dollars at the local jurisdiction is better than state. So that's just the information. The big thank you is, I can't believe it's been a year that we've been here. It will be September 19th will be one year. And the, I just want to say a special thank you to the Police Department from the beginning coming down and talking to us, but also early on, there was some events that happened in some neighboring jurisdictions where some cannabis stores were held up. And I think a car drove through a store, and your Police Department came immediately to my shop, perused, made sure we were safe, took some preventative action, came down and talked to my staff the next day, and just can't say thanks enough for how great that is, right? Thank you. And last but not least, I have some invites. I'll give them here. We're having a little party on the 19th, just to say the year, 30% off everything and cake at noon. So we're really happy to be a part of this community. Really enjoyed the Paulsboro Beer Rooms that our neighbors have participated in, and so we're having a good time with that and being here in Paulsboro. So thank you.
Thank you. Comments for the Council? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we are going into an executive session. And is 20 minutes wrong? Is that what we're doing?
Five, five thirty.
Okay, and so we will return by 5:30. And this is an executive session regarding current potential litigation, RCW 4230110I20. And so we will return at 5:30. Thank you. Second floor conference room. Second floor conference room, guys.
Okay, folks, it is five thirty and we have returned from our executive session. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is mayor's reports and council comments. So Ms. Crowe, how are you this evening?
I'm doing fine and I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Go ahead Doug.
Hello Mayor, um, I'd like to thank our citizens for coming in, speaking at the um, uh, comment section and I'd like to uh, respond to Dr. Zimmer's resolution request. Um, I appreciate you sending that an email form, so I had time to read through it before uh, meeting tonight. Um, and I applaud our community members for getting signatures on resolutions and bringing resolutions forward to the council. That's pretty incredible. Um, love seeing people in um, participating and uh, enacting change in their local government. Um, and this specific resolution is extremely legally ambitious, uh, which I, and I, it's um, highlights a gap in the constitution, I think, for allowing citizens to have resolution against the federal government. But I have some concerns and uh, Dr. Zimmer's, I'll send these to you. Um, my concern is around corporations and wealthy individuals attacking or suing individual federal agents. And I think the number of federal agents that are misbehaving right now are vastly outweighed by the thousands of federal agents that are doing good work. Um, and an example would be like, what if Monsanto or Boeing um, sued to each EPA agent that tried to come and investigate like pollution or corruption um, with those corporations and they certainly have the resources to sue every single one of the two hundred EPA uh, agents that enforce uh, EPA pollution standards. So I'll send that question to you. Um, and thanks for bringing the resolution up and last comment from me, I met with our two-day-old port manager, uh, um, Mr. Weaver and I'm very excited to work with Mr. Weaver on um, as the liaison to support and making Paul's Bow's waterfront and keeping it amazing and making it even greater. Care please.
Thank you, Mr. Taber. Mr. Eckert?
Uh, yes, thank you for the folks that came and made comment tonight. Um, I just had, there's a lot of uh, we're headed, it's interesting, we're headed into fall, but we're also headed into a big special event, busy season in the city, a lot of things going on. A lot of things just this Saturday, so um, pay attention, the newsletter was full of amazing events upcoming, amazing work the city's doing. Um, but just this Saturday, I think I've got four things on my calendar, all happening just in one day, so um, nothing, city's not slowing down just because it's coming down to the hot season, pay attention to all that. Um, also pay attention, you know, school started back up, so you know, we got new drivers on the road, we got drivers that are back, we got kids walking, um, buses out, so you know, pay attention again. Um, the streets are a little busier than they were a week ago, uh, so please pay attention to that. And and I'll just say for the back row, you know, wish me luck in the Powerball tonight, because if I win, it's gonna be really good for your uh, for your cafe.
Go ahead, Gary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, Mr. Eckert brought up our wonderful city newsletter, just a reminder to people that if you aren't receiving our monthly city newsletter, you can go to the city website and sign up um, to get it as an email and uh, it is packed full of great information. Uh, thanks to the staff for uh, for all the hard work they put into that. I always enjoy reading it. Um, a couple of things, uh, thank you to everyone who came to speak with us tonight. I was uh, I commented to the mayor on the way to the executive session that this uh, that constitutional issues, garbage and cannabis may be the most diverse group of citizen comments we have ever had in my six years on council. Um, so thank you to everybody who who came um, and uh, shared those thoughts with us. Um, and uh, I want to take a minute to thank uh, Paul'sville Police Department. Uh, I heard from a couple of people and I saw with my own eyes today, our, our officers were out um, checking whether people were stopping at stop signs completely. I know, was one of the uh, traffic enforcements that we were doing today. And I know I saw a communication recently from Chief Harding that uh, due to the uh, many numbers of citizen complaints about uh, speeding, um, people running stop signs, et cetera, that we were gonna be start doing more street enforcement and I want to tell you, it's happening. So if you're driving around the streets of Paul's Bow, uh, you're gonna want to observe the traffic laws because uh, increased enforcement is out there. I also wanna um, remind people that uh, this Saturday is the Paul's Bow Pride in the Park Celebration down in Waterfront Park. Uh, it's the third year, it's become an annual event, uh, eleven AM to six PM on Saturday. Uh, should be a fun event and I think the weather forecast looks good. Uh, I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. Go ahead.
Thank you.
I have no comments. Thank you. Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna hearken back to citizen comments, our last meeting in August, when we received an invitation uh, on a neighborhood organizational meeting for emergency preparedness. And this has to do with uh, the mayor and the council's initiative last year to hire an emergency management director, and thank you, Mr. Eckert, for having championed that. And the end product being the development and delivery.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you all.
Uh, so uh, the end product of that is a emergency management preparedness plan. And I know Mayor, that uh, Director Schoonmaker's already been working with staff on initial city uh, preparation and action, and then like ripples in a pond, it rolls out from there, eventually reaching our neighborhoods. And for this plan to be really effective, it actually needs to be embedded in the neighborhood. So I attended that August twenty-seventh meeting. I know uh, my colleague, Councilwoman Crowe, attended as soon as she got off of work at the library. Thank you for coming down. Uh, and there were uh, more than a dozen neighbors and neighborhoods represented. David Rasmussen, uh, who's the uh, public information officer, maybe you were there at that time on that hiring, Commissioner Gelder addressed the group from Port Orchard. Uh, and I want to thank Karen for organizing and inviting council. Uh, and the big takeaway for me, so I don't belabor this, was the point number one, know a little. Point number two, do what matters. And number three, learn with others. And that brings me to my point, Mayor, and I'm gonna hand these flyers out, if we could, I only have four, if we could share between two of us, because there's a point I want to make. Uh, the real effort here is to organize neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And those start small, and uh, Mr. Asmussen encouraged the group, myself. The first meeting might only be two or three neighbors. The point is to get the word out and the word will spread like a chain. And then that will grow. And so for our community to be truly prepared, it's not just the city, it's not just the police, it's not just the fire, it's where we live, our neighbors. And so I want to emphasize that I took that lesson from it. If you uh, opened this one brochure I just handed out, what really hit me and brought it home was the flyer. Think of um, Hurricane Katrina, which just had and was observed uh, on its twentieth. This is for the home so that you in an emergency can put in your front window, you're okay? Or the other side, which really drives it all help. So this is more than theoretical, it's more than a document, it's more than a plan, it's more than our first responders. It's where people and families live and being prepared. So I look forward to the city as we gain more experience with the plan. Being very proactive with the neighbors and the neighborhoods in getting it out and getting the word propagated. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Mr. Newell, how are you this evening?
I'm gonna try the microphone again, can you hear me this time? Okay. So I appreciate the opportunity to join remotely and uh, we're out enjoying a little bit more of the sunshine before the rains come in, so nothing more than that tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Newell. Um, let's see, I've got a few things here. Um, uh, to what Mr. Stern was saying, um, two things that needs to be happening. One, we need to start the map your neighborhood process and that should be ongoing. Uh, we had a robust outreach program about a decade ago where we had this council chamber filled up over and over again with um, you know, Pete, all the neighborhoods, you know, most neighborhoods in the city of Paul's Bow, and even those directly around us, the big neighborhoods, have homeowners association, so they already have neighborhood structures. So, uh, you know, we have them all gathered together and in order to, you know, so they can have community meetings in their own neighborhoods to figure out, oh, we're really lucky, we got a plumber down here and that's a dentist and that over there you have a teacher, a wood shop teacher, et cetera. So you know what your neighbors are and you know what their skillsets are. Um, that's the first thing. And the second thing is CERT training, which is Citizens Emergency Response Training. And we did CERT training here in the city hall by DEM, um, it's probably about eight years ago. So many of these things kind of fell apart during the pandemic, because for all of our emergency training and preparedness, we weren't prepared for a pandemic. I mean, that was like, and so, but a lot of those processes um, were um, were up and running before the pandemic. So um, I, I hear you, it's, it's an urgent thing. And I know uh, Mr. Schoonmaker, who is our uh, emergency manager coordinator, is also aware of this, so it's, it's ongoing. Um, let's see, we have um, uh, I have a proclamation to read, first of all.
Yes, sure. As many of you know, I wear another hat in the community, so in reference to the CERT training, just uh, be aware or look for some information um, coming forth as a space that CERT training will be offered. Sorry to be so vague, it's still coming together. I'm talking with the emergency management department about seeing how um, I'm sorry, sorry to be, the library can partner with um, uh, the emergency management um, that training that is offered and have uh, space for the CERT training. So I'm hoping that that will come together. Look at twenty twenty-six though, a lot of planning, okay? Uh, and to support that in this community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you Pam, I appreciate that. Um, the, the next thing is we have a bike ride, or Jeff, Jeff, are you gonna talk about that? I'll let you talk about the bike ride, okay? So uh, we have a ribbon cutting with the Nordic colleges. Kim? Are you here? Are you, wanna talk about the ribbon cutting? Okay, during department heads, you can talk about the ribbon cutting. Uh, let's see, and and an ADU open house, uh, this Friday, next Friday, next Friday?
No, it'll also be on the sixteenth and at, from five to seven at SIP.
Yeah, at the SIP, yeah. So um, if you want it, the SIP is a new uh, restaurant um, downtown and if, we're gonna have a long conversation about accessory dwelling units, ADUs, which uh, our, our own planning department had the right and her team spearheaded that for the entire county about how you can build an ADU at your home. So if you're interested in that, reach out to uh, um, the planning department here, or you can reach out to me or our uh, uh, Administrator Gelder, and so that we can give you the particulars. Um, the next thing I have is a proclamation. And uh, it's regarding recovery month, which is what we're doing right now and which is a subject that's been incredibly important to the city of Paul's Bow. So it says, whereas, according to the most recent national survey by Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Association, that SAMSHA, sixteen point eight percent of the population over the age of twelve, or approximately forty-eight million people, meet clinical criteria for having past your drug or alcohol use disorder. And whereas, there were over four hundred emergency, emergency medical services EMS responses related to a suspected opioid overdose in Kitsap County in twenty twenty-four. And sixty Kitsap residents died from opioid overdose, overdose the same year. And whereas, according to SAMSHA, four out of five Americans with a substance use disorder in twenty twenty-four did not receive treatment the previous year. And whereas, recovery from harmful alcohol and drug use is possible with commitment, peer and community support and access to evidence-based treatment. And whereas, recognizing recovery month spreads the message that recovery changes lives. Peer support and treatment are effective, and by treating substance use disorders as seriously as other medical conditions, we benefit all, that we benefit all parts of our community. And whereas, the city of Paul's Bow recognizes its role in promoting recovery by hiring and uplifting people. I want to say that again. By hiring and uplifting people in recovery, making freely, making free and friendly services available, encouraging recovery residents and partnering with governments and providers to expand access to care. Now therefore, I, Rebecca Erickson, Mayor of the City of Paul's Bow, Washington, do hereby proclaim September as Recovery Month, to raise awareness of the power of recovery and acknowledge the city's obligation to promote recovery as part of our healthcare system in the city of Paul's Bow, and encourage all citizens to join in me recognizing this important initiative. The city of Paul's Bow has done a lot of work in this department regarding advocating recovery for people in our community. It's all around us, um. Drug abuse has been a scourge for years and we have decided that we here in the city of Paul's Bow with great staff, really supportive council, have decided that it's our obligation to do something about it. To do something about it. And so um, we have the Recovery Resource Center now and they're all back there. Wave, folks. Wave. And um, it's important that we acknowledge that this is a problem in our community. And when local government acknowledges that there's a problem in the community, they have an obligation to do something about it. And that's what the city of Paul's Bow's done, so um, enough with the speech. Um, does anybody have any other further comments about this? Okay?
Um, Mayor, if it's okay, I wanted to take a minute to uh, recognize a guest in the audience. We have former city council member Ken Thomas is with us tonight. Uh, Ken recently moved back to Paul's Bow from Arizona. Great to see you, Ken, and um, we will be talking about him a little bit later, um, uh, in terms of board and commission reports for a park and recreation commissioner. Thank you. Good to see you, Ken.
Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just, I, I can't brag on you folks enough for all you do. So, I'm glad we did the resolution, but you know, what you do every day, it's not just this month, it's every day. I'll keep up the good work.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is board and commission uh, um, and outside agency reports. Does anyone have board and commissions outside agency? Okay, Mr. Everett, go ahead with your question.
Um, yeah, so we, we got a date for the three oh seven working group, but I know we, we did a survey for the three oh five next meeting. Do we get a lock, do we get a date on that one yet? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the mayor and I attended Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council in Bremerton yesterday afternoon, and for those who aren't familiar, it's the four cities elected, the county commissioners, the two tribes, the United States Navy, the Port of Bremerton, the Port of Kingston. It's really the big table in the county where we all come together and the, I think the items which are relevant, and Katie, do you have that one photo to throw up there? Um, we had a presentation from Commissioner Katie Walters backed up by folks from Seattle and others, having to do with the twenty twenty-six World Cup of soccer known in the rest of the world as football. And so I wanted to start by sharing, this will be the logo that they've come up with, and it's gonna be a major effort to coordinate with uh, Everett and Tacoma, Seattle, and make Kitsap a major side destination for visiting. Not only that, but they explained that the new Quincy Square on, in downtown Bremerton will become one of what, Mayor, four fan zones in the state? I think Yakima, Spokane, Bellingham or Everett, I forget, and then Kitsap, where there'll be a large screen setup where the public can come for free and see all the matches and enjoy the atmosphere and celebration with other vendors and supplies. So this is very exciting and it will be June and July of next year and they expect tens of thousands of people to be coming over. There'll be extra ferries, uh, there's funding from the state legislature to keep our fast ferries expansive. And my one reflection on it, Mayor, uh, in reading about Paul's Bow history, it was the first renovation of the downtown where they repainted the downtown in nineteen fifty-nine or nineteen sixty in anticipation for the nineteen sixty-two World's Fair. I forget, who would have been the mayor at that point?
I have no idea.
But that was, you know, since the fire in the teens, that was the first big effort to But that was, you know, since the fire in the teens, that was the first big effort to spruce up and restore the downtown. And it was in preparation for the Seattle World's Fair. So this, they're telling us will be the like. And that we all need to prepare, and we in Paulsbow as well. Maybe my colleagues on the lodging tax advisory committee have already been or will be presented proposals specific to Paulsbow. But they said we will become one of the major side destinations, and we need to be prepared for crowds and events and activities during that two-month period. So I share that. That was the lead item. Then just very quickly, uh, the city clerk distributed today the legislative reception for the twenty-third, thirty-fifth, and twenty-six delegations. Will be most likely at the Kitsap Golf and Country Club again. It will be in November. And please register. That was disseminated to all of you today. And we expect much more robust attendance because it won't be conflicting with the, um, the caucuses that begin to take place for the sh- short session in December that we had last year. Uh, transportation items. Thank you, uh, Councilman Eckert, for bringing up the three oh seven working group. We officially announced that's going to be getting underway to the rest of our colleagues. Doesn't come with funding like the three oh five working group came. But we had all the commissioners there and everyone acknowledged that effort underway. Um, and I believe that concludes my remarks on that board, Mayor.
You know, um, the one thing that really bothers me about this is if you're coming from London and you see this, and you say, where the hell's Kitsap? What's Kitsap? What's Kitsap? I mean, you don't talk about Mariposa County. You talk about Phoenix. You don't talk about Harris County. You talk about Houston. You don't talk about Cook County. You talk about Chicago. You're all, all your addresses, they don't say Kitsap. They say Silverdale. They say Paulsbow. They say Bremerton. They say Kingston. Okay, they're physical places and none of which are Kitsap. And, you know, I've I've been kind of arguing this thing for almost, ever since I've been a mayor. I don't understand marketing Kitsap because it's not it's not intuitive to people. That, you know, you don't market counties. You market physical, specific destinations. And well, I've been doing it for sixteen years and they haven't listened to me yet. So I suppose I might as well give up on that speech. But anyway, um, go ahead.
And kind of with that, and it's something I I had asked Representative Nance about when he, a while back. You know, you we brought up the extra ferries for this. And the one, one big concern that I had, and I asked him is that when this ends, they go away. And they aren't really extra ferries. They're back to the ferries we used to have. Um, and so I asked him, what can we do? You know, what can we do to ensure that that doesn't happen? That we keep the ferries we were supposed to have, that we got back because of this, and that they don't go away when this ends. Um, so I don't know if the TRCC can keep that at the front forefront of their talks too, but it's not extra ferries. It's it's the ferries we used to have that because of ferry maintenance and everything else that we've cut. But we need those ferries. We need those ferries when when World Cup isn't happening. And so, um, really what his answer was, we just got to keep it. We got to keep pushing it. So, um, whatever we can do to push that the extra ferries don't go away when World Cup does, I think we, I think it's a focus we should have.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make a a comment that I have found surprising. Um, some of you know, or my colleagues know that I like to cruise. Um, I like to do some travel. I'm not necessarily, uh, heavy international travel. It, I'm astounded when I connect with people on these trips, um, and in, um, various locations when they, you know, chit chat, where are you from? I'll say Kitsap County. Little bit of a blank look. And I'll say I was, you know, born and raised in Bremerton. I'm surprised when there are more people, when I say I live in Paulsbow, Washington. It is astounding. People know where Paulsbow, Washington is. It's like, wait a minute, you from New Orleans? You know where Paulsbow, Washington is? And I say, yes, a little Nordic town. And I say, on indigenous land, I do say that. Um, that, you know, they really appreciate what Paulsbow brings. So I get it. I hear you with marketing the destinations. They know where Kingston is. Evidently, they know where Bainbridge Island is. It's not the other Seattle, but you know, they know where Bainbridge Island is. It's interesting, the number of people I have met in Hawaii, um, you know, on cruises to the Bahamas, you know, et cetera, et cetera, that are not from here, but they know where Paulsbow, and then they will name Slyes. You know, um, they, yeah, so I I'm just echoing what you're saying. I get it. And, um, you know, yes, uh, Bremerton born, you know, each location, each city has this attributes that add to the collection of Kitsap County. And I I'm just, I admit, I am astounded with, they will call out Paulsbow, the statue, Slyes, the waterfront. Um, so something to be proud of, Paulsbow.
Okay, there's a couple of the things that happened yesterday, uh, one of which was pretty important. Um, at the Kitsap Transit Board Meeting, uh, Kitsap Transit decided to go ahead and make the land acquisition for the Johnson uh, Park and Ride Lot. Um, and right as you're coming into the city from Bainbridge Island, there's a round, the brand new roundabout. Uh, there's going to be a park and ride lot next to that roundabout. So people can park their cars and get on the bus at that roundabout location. Um, Kitsap Transit voted to move forward with that yesterday. So that's, that's kind of big news. Um, uh, the other thing is, uh, we had a rousing health district meeting and, um, we have a new health officer. Um, Dr. Gibb Morrow is gone, and they have hired an interim. His name is Dr. Uh, Herbie Duber. Uh, he's from the University of Washington, seems like a very articulate, bright guy that'll be um, be good in the position, although I will miss Gibb Morrow. Uh, Gibb Morrow was, I think, did a remarkable job here in the last five years. So we we got a new health officer. And the final thing is, we had a meeting with Kitsap nine one one. That's our emergency response system. And they are moving forward with the forty-two million dollar radio brand-new radio system. It's about half, halfway. Chief, do you know anything more about this at all? About halfway, three quarters, complete? Something like that. It's a huge deal where they're basically changing out all of the physical antennas in Kitsap County and all of the portable units that our law, first responders use, that's fire, that's police, but it's also things like the coroner's office, uh, Public Works, et cetera. There's over a thousand handheld radios. And then there's what's called MCTs, which is basically laptops that law enforcement and fire have within their vehicles. It's a huge expensive deal. It's moving forward really quite well. Um, the new executive director there is doing a good job. And so, um, you know, fingers crossed. But these, these are big dollar organizations. This is huge amounts of money that are being spent. So, Mr. Stern.
Um, have we identified a financial impact we need to anticipate for our budget? I know that the last time SenCom did a big upgrade, we got kind of carried along in the wake effect of it.
It's so far, the radio system is being borne by an additional tax measure that was passed. We call it Prop Two. Uh, I think there will be a small increase in fees, but not a huge amount because they've got a whole nother separate sales tax piece that they're using for the radio system. But as soon as we know specific numbers, I'll let you know. So, um, I just wanted to keep you up to date with that. And that's all the reports I have. Anybody questions? Some questions? Okay. Uh, seeing and nearing, uh, seeing and hearing now, and we're on to the city administrator and department head comments. Go ahead, Rob.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Just a shout out to Councilmember McVay. Um, and because you were talking about, there's a really robust conversation about marketing. And it just happens to that Visit Kitsap has been developing some videos that will be coming or ads that will be uh, released here over the next few weeks. So, um, check this one out.
But I don't know, why would there just be a Norwegian town just across the water?
Can we increase the volume?
You would think they would at least try to make it bigger, but no. I could walk across it in like half an hour on the scenic.
Would you start it over? Can you?
I don't know. I don't trust it around here. I think it's too nice. Like, I get scenery. But I don't know, why would there just be a Norwegian town across the water? Like Leavenworth with a different font. You would think they would at least try to make it bigger, but no. I could walk across it in like half an hour on the scenic route. See, walk in the park. Why do they need a bus here anyway? I don't understand the variety here. Like, you're telling me you can shop for books, shoes, women's apparel, Scandinavian gifts, pet supplies, Nordic licorice, all together in one street. If you made this a mall, you could charge a lot more for parking. Just saying. Hey, hey, guys up here. It's an embarrassment of riches, honestly. Like, paradox of choice. You know, if there are this many good coffee shops, then how am I supposed to pick? I just got to sample them all. Like, at least with Starbucks, you go in, you wait an hour, and you know what you're getting. And with this place, I mean, I mean, it's the same issue with the food. You know, there's no coherent theme. You can kind of just get whatever style of cuisine you want without a reservation. It's okay. Oh, yeah, and the bars, I mean, ugh. How many Viking-themed drinks do you need in one night? It's hot, hot. A bit excessive, yes, I mean. Just one sec. Hey, hey, I just need one. Can I get like water or something?
Well, there we go.
Telling you, nothing about this place makes any sense to me. It's like a dream or something. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Thanks, Brooks. So basically, uh, what they've done is that's the longer video, and then they do shorter uh, ads based on that, whether it's coffee or shopping, uh, restaurants, et cetera. So, um, kind of fun little promotion of Paulsbow. And so when it's available, I think you can get it through their Facebook posts, et cetera. Um, but share it far and wide, and we'll have more people from New Orleans or other places knowing where Paulsbow is. So you can check that out. I also wanted to let you know, after the article ran, um, the the new red light camera coming online, um, we have had, you know, there's always a level of interest in that. And just to let you know, and I don't, the chief can speak more to it. Uh, we are working with Vera Mobility about a little bit more analysis about other potential locations. So just to know that that is underway. I don't think we have a set timeline for that to occur, but, um, they are actively working on it. Um, let's see here, the other piece of it, um, I will, I just know that we have some great uh, workshop items coming up. Uh, and we have a wonderful cadre of, uh, staff that are here, and I'm looking forward to hearing those presentations as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Who's that? Diane? Go ahead.
Good evening, council. Um, I just had a couple of things I wanted to share tonight. On August twenty-fifth, um, several of us attended the Public Facility District Meeting. We presented an update on the perk, and it was well received. As you know, the revenue source for the Public Facility District has been extended through twenty fifty-six. They are looking at how to allocate additional funds to projects, and we did make a request. We will hear more after they have a workshop on September seventeenth. And they will make a decision in October regarding additional requests. So keep your fingers crossed for Paulsbow. That could be very good for the perk. Um, the next thing I wanted to let you know, just in case you hear from any of the businesses downtown or citizens, um, the fire districts came together for some training over the last couple of days. And they were doing that down at the yacht club. Um, there was a little bit of a a mismatch on the communication. We normally don't flush hydrants during the day. And our public works team is very strategic about how we flush hydrants. When you open up a hydrant and five hundred gallons a minute starts to flow out, it tends to stir up the little pebbles of dust that might be sitting in the main. So we tend to do that at night. Unfortunately, it did happen during the day, and there were some businesses that were impacted and concerned about, um, the water getting stirred up a bit. So we apologize for that. Uh, Mike Lund met with the fire department. We feel like we're realigned on communication and location for those things to happen. And, um, we don't anticipate it happening again, but we apologize. Um, the second, uh, or a couple of things on the, well, we can't have any meeting without parking and, um, Heather's out of town. So I will mention that, um, Jeff and, or Josh and Mike shared with me that Mike is ordering the signs for um, downtown as it relates to parking. So you know that that's moving ahead. Um, Van Heimer does need an additional week of night work. They're almost done. Um, the utility surprises downtown slowed them down a little bit. Um, but they're moving forward and anticipate another week of night work. Um, Josh tells me that, um, College Mercantile, which is up across from the perk, is getting started. They just had their, um, pre-con. So another project in town. We continue to be very busy with construction activity. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. A couple of Nordic cottage-related announcements. Uh, today was wonderful. Uh, the planter boxes were put into the Hope Gardens outside of the Nordic cottages thanks to the efforts of, I would say, twelve, uh, Blue Bills volunteers. I know that council is very familiar with the Blue Bills. We funded them for a couple of years to do some repairs, um, and help with some lift installations in, uh, the Paulsbow area for low-income, uh, older individuals. They were out in force today uh, building wonderful planter, uh, boxes as part of the new Hope Gardens at Nordic cottages. So they were rewarded with ice cream, but, uh, I'm sure they would appreciate your thanks as well. They did a really nice job today. Uh, as Mayor Erickson mentioned, uh, the Nordic cottages open house is now officially scheduled for the sixteenth of September. That will start at noon and go until two. Uh, those of you that can't make the open house, I learned today that there'll be a, an alternative date that y'all can come and and take a look at the, at the structures and the interiors. If that's something of interest because you can't make the sixteenth, please let me know, and I'd be happy to include you on the alternative tour. Um, one announcement, um, we'll be presenting during workshop about some things that are happening at the Recovery Center and the Recovery Cafe. I know Summer will be inviting you all to something going on this coming Friday, but I just want to say it here as well, so we make sure not to forget. Uh, we have an enormous mural that's being installed in the Recovery Cafe. Uh, the tree has become very symbolic for us, um, as something showing growth and the the leaves spreading out, representing different different people that work at the center, different members, different contributors to what we're doing. We'd very much like to invite, uh, city council members, city administrator, the mayor, um, to come and help us paint the tree trunk on Friday. We're going to do this in stages, and the first paint is going on the wall right around eleven o'clock on Friday and until one o'clock. So if that's something you might be interested in, Summer will talk more about it during the presentation. But Popeye on on Friday will put a paintbrush in your hand. Thank you.
Jeff, you're next.
Do they get to pick the paint color?
No.
All right, I have a, um, start with the most exciting one right here. So can we just a second to share this screen? One moment, hit this button, hit share. It's working. There we go. All right. So you may recall, we have a wonderful community group, the Paulsbow Skate Park Advisory Rebuild Group for, this is the Rob Park Skate Park. So for the last two years, they have been fundraising and putting in an enormous amount of labor over at, uh, Rob Park, rebuilding that, that twenty-two-year-old skate park. And it is going to be ready. They're meeting right now, the the plan, the finish the final planning session. But Saturday, September twentieth, uh, the whole community is invited, ten AM. We ask for folks to RSVP. Uh, that way we know, uh, how many folks are coming. So we'll have a ribbon cutting happening for the new skate park. It's more accessible, it's more inclusive. Uh, there's going to be a skate jam afterwards. So just to learn and ride and open for the community with with, uh, uh, some pro skaters, some event skaters, and some new skaters. So it's a really great bonding session. Uh, this is going to be Saturday, September twentieth. This will go live online likely tomorrow, uh, and we'll start advertising this. Other updates. Let's go inside, is we have our Sound to Olympics bike ride for elected officials this Friday. We have nine elected officials who have confirmed they'll be attending. Eight will be riding. Uh, we also have another thirty-three riders. This is a learn and ride for our elected officials to learn, uh, about how what already exists for the Sound to Olympics Trail and some priorities and challenges. We have We have a number of organizations attending from, um, Kitsap County, Washtot, the Squamish Tribe, uh, of course, the City of Paul's Bow, City of Bainbridge. Uh, about another 10 organizations, I won't, I won't go through all of them, but it's really impressive to see everybody come together. And our city has been very supportive, working with our partners on this. Uh, we're looking forward to hearing, um, Council will have an update after that ride finishes.
Question, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
With my bike helmet, will you have available a set of Viking horns? I can possibly spring load on those?
I can bring tape.
I can handle tape.
Okay. Let me make a note, bring tape. Got it. Moving on, um, yes, we can bring tape. Fish Park has received some free BlackBerry mowing, mowing, and as well as an Eagle Scout project to put new swallow houses up. So this is, it's really neat to see our community engage, uh, improving our parks. The other exciting area is that senior newsletter, the Senior Connections Newsletter, the head, the first edition, has made waves in our community. We have new organizations and businesses reaching out to us who want to be involved and offering services and partnering, um, to better serve our, our community members who are seniors, uh, here. And so we're looking forward to working with them and having them hopefully involved in the next edition, which will be later this fall, likely October-ish, I would say. Um, let's see here. Another update, and this is in relation to a comment that was previously made, is we are doing a brand-new project to support our, our veterans as well as our active-duty military and our first responders by doing, um, it's partnering with the Veterans Yoga Project. So we're offering free yoga classes for, uh, if you're a first responder, active military, or a veteran, or if you're just a community member and wants to come down, it's, it's free, uh, feel free to donate. It goes, the proceeds go to the Veterans Yoga Project. And this is gonna be starting on September 11th and running all the way through the end of this year over at our Community Rec Center. We're, we have a lot of energy behind this. We're excited to see this offered, uh, as there's a need in the community. On the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee side...
Just a second, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, we already mentioned the new addition to American Legion Park.
Do you, do you want me to mention that?
If you want, or I can.
You should, you should, you should mention it.
Um, the, the, uh, there is now a, uh, box there to receive damaged flags. So if you have a damaged US flag and you want to see that it's disposed of properly, um, there is now a box at American Legion Park there on the side. Um, you can take your flag there, and, uh, one of the veterans organizations, um, or possibly the Boy Scouts, we partner with both, um, will see that the flag will be disposed of properly, uh, with honor.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker. Go ahead, Jeff.
And that's in partnership with American Legion, our local American Legion, as well as, uh, VFW chapters here. And Public Works just installed that. So thank you for mentioning that. The Paul's Bow Tourism Grant closes tonight, so if you want to get your lodging tax application in, 11:59 p.m. Uh, and then for Council, staff are preparing a presentation for early October, early to mid-October, about special event permit updates, as well as updates to Mural Iverson Williams Park. Remember, we have a temporary pause, so we, we know we're waiting for that update. We're targeting October to get that presentation, uh, ready and, and for a workshop. And... Thank you, Public Works. Josh Jones in particular came down and changed out the two front doors. They're ADA accessible, you hit a button, they open, they stay open. Folks are thrilled, this just went live yesterday. Our Public Works team is doing a phenomenal job making rec center improvements for everyone. Just wanna give them a shout out.
Thanks, Jeff. Chief, go ahead.
Just a, a brief update on the harbor. Today was the day that we executed what we've called Operation Flotilla. So we came to Council and, uh, briefed you about several boats that had lashed together and the, uh, projected cost it might require the city to pay, uh, to take care of that issue. Thankfully, the public, uh, publicity for that and the communication from Sergeant Hausberg, most of those folks moved on their own, and we had to remove one boat today, that was all. So it was a very successful operation. Those were all the occupied vessels. Now our focus will shift to the abandoned, unoccupied vessels that are still out in the bay, but we'll be able to, to focus on those from here forward.
Thank you, Chief.
Right, Chief, can you, you know, Rob mentioned a bit, can you talk about the red light camera? Um, there, there's been a lot of questions I've seen online and all. Um, just, just, just for folks that aren't really, haven't been paying attention to the last two years of what's been going on, just about, just kind of share for that.
So generally, the, uh, the plans were approved prior to January of '24. The process to, uh, construct that and to establish it has taken much longer than anyone thought it would. It requires partnerships with some very busy agencies, um, Washtot and Puget Sound Energy. We are now in the phase where we're waiting for one more inspection from PSE. And then when that occurs, in another several weeks, they will be able to send a different team to hook up power. Once that occurs, we'll start the warning process, the 30-day warning period. And we're looking now at seeing that if all goes well, and I hesitate to even suggest that because of delays we've had, uh, that should start in October. And then we'll be live.
Thank you. I, I, I'm really shocked at the number of people that are bothered by the idea of having to stop at a red light. Um, it just, it floors me. Um, and so I'm just gonna ask of the community is start now, slowing down at yellow? Because my fear is people are gonna suddenly start stopping like they're supposed to and rear-ending each other. Because people have been for so long used to flooring it when they see yellow at that light, that that's gonna become the problem. It, so just do what we were always supposed to do there, and it'll all work out, and you won't get a ticket because you'll stop.
It's, it's been very interesting. We've, as you mentioned earlier, we've increased our enforcement efforts because the number-one concern that we receive is about traffic, traffic speeds and noncompliance with control signals as well as stop signs. On Fourth Avenue today, one of our sergeants was there for a couple of hours and observed, uh, folks driving through there at 30 miles an hour without even putting on the brakes. Um, this kind of behavior has, has grown, it's, it's got to stop because it's the kind of behavior that causes accidents and gets people hurt.
Yeah.
So really, um, traffic, electronic enforcement systems are objective. They don't know who they're ticketing. They, they operate electronically without a human that sees the event. So in that sense, it's the most objective way that we can enforce. But to your point, you will not get a ticket if you stop, nor if you don't speed.
Yep. And I just want to say thank you, um, when we talked about cannabis a whole year ago, which I cannot believe it has been a year, um, my biggest concern with moving forward of that was the safety. Uh, you know, it was exactly what was mentioned, the places getting robbed, driven into. So I just thank you for staying on that. Thank you for being proactive, making sure that that was not a problem here. Because that was 100% my concern about moving forward with that, so thanks.
You know, um, the red light camera, um, I posted it up on my social media site and two other group sites, and it was shared 83 times. It's the most, um, how shall we say, active thing I think I've ever posted. So the word's getting out, and, and that's good. We, we don't want to give people tickets. Everybody says this is a revenue generator. It's, that's not the purpose. The purpose is there's been, uh, there's a high level of accidents that occur at that particular intersection. And the scary part about it is not only has there been a history of accidents there, but there's speed there, and speed is when people really get hurt. And so, um, you know, this is, this was meant to, um, improve safety. Uh, we have a policy in the state of Washington called, uh, what is it? Target Zero, which is we're supposed to be trying to target zero highway fatalities. That's the way we're supposed to be designing and managing our transportation infrastructure right now. That's the policy of the state of Washington. So, um, you know, thank you, Chief, for being so diligent. Keep pushing them, and you know, if we need more, we'll put up more. I mean, you know, people need to slow down, and they need to not run red lights. Pretty simple. So, anything else, Chief? Anyone else have any comments, any department heads? Anybody? Okay, so let's keep moving on with our agenda. Uh, we do not have a consent agenda today, so we're gonna go ahead and move directly into the business agenda. And this is the Parks and Recreation Commission appointment. Uh, Katie, your name is behind that, go ahead.
Okay, so our Parks and Rec Commission had a vacant position, and we're here to seek the council concurrence of the mayor's appointment of Mr. Ken Thomas to the Parks and Rec Commission with a term expiring 12/31/2026.
Should we all clap? Let's clap. Welcome back, Ken. I, I entertain a motion, please.
Can we invite Mr. Thomas up for a remark?
Come on up, Ken, do you have a remark?
You might remember the drill passed, Councilman.
Wow, um, Mayor, council members, uh, staff and citizens, it's, it's great to be here, and, uh, thank you for providing me with something I need, which is an opportunity to serve and, uh, and help the community. My mother is 94 years old, and she raised me well. And, uh, beginning at a young age, uh, my family is always involved in community service. And so even now, at this age, I feel the need to do that. I think I bring something that will be useful to the city. I think that, uh, everything in the community of Paul's Bow is teamwork. It's always teamwork, citizen involvement, and, uh, so, uh, I think that I can sit alongside my fellow park commissioners and together accomplish some things. And I think I bring some experience and talent to the table. And so I'm looking forward to it, and I, uh, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. I entertain a motion, please.
I'd be happy to make a motion, Mayor. Move to confirm the mayor's appointment to the Park and Recreation Commission as presented.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Pam, Ms. Crowe?
Crowe, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Eckerd, aye.
McVay, aye.
Littler, aye.
Gratefully, Stern, aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Ken. Oh, I'm sorry, Doug, go ahead.
Noel, aye.
Oh, okay. Um, thank you, Council. Uh, unanimous confirmation. And I want to say, without Ken Thomas, we would not have Administrator Gelder sitting there. Uh, Ken Thomas took the lead and did all the research, uh, in order to basically change our form of government a little bit. This is, Ken did that, and it, the city owes you a great debt, Ken. Thank you. Okay, um, that's it for our business agenda. Do you want to take five minutes? Ten minutes? Five minutes? 6:30. 6:30, we will be at our workshop.
Thank you, Council. Good evening. Um, in honor of Recovery Month, I wanted to bring the H3 team that works at the Recovery Center and Recovery Cafe to you to make a presentation tonight about our efforts at the cafe and the center. Uh, let me do a quick introduction. I'll make a quick presentation, and then we'll get to the interesting part, which is letting other people speak. So, uh, please welcome, we'll go from your right to left. Uh, that's Julia Rodriguez, our peer support specialist. That's Julia Rodriguez, our Peer Support Specialist Supervisor at the end. Haley McLaughlin works with us from Kitsap Homes of Compassion. She's a mental health case manager and also helps our members access benefits at the center. Summer Anderson, who's our Recovery Cafe Coordinator and in many ways fearless leader. Carrie Wax, our other fearless leader, our operational supervisor. She is the front door person that most people see when they first come into our Recovery Center. And to my right, this is Susan, or Shu Delap, who works with us from AMFM Healthcare. She does vocational readiness training at the center, teaches anger management classes, and basically keeps us all feeling much better on bad days with her wonderful presence. So I'll make a quick presentation. I had a few comments before. I'm going to turn things over to the team. Folks that aren't here tonight, that I just want to remind you are part of what we're doing at the cafe and the center. There's Alex Springer, that guy in the center. Alex Springer manages Gambit Recovery's operations here in Washington State and is the force holding things together at the Nelson House, which is a recovery residence here in Nelson Park. Who else is not here? Oh, there's Lee Havcost. She joined us recently as a Peer Support Supervisor.
Just Peer Support.
Peer Support. Thank you. Peer Support Specialist. It was the S-word.
Thank you, Karen.
Just a reminder for the public that the city is engaged in a number of recovery efforts. We opened up the Recovery Resource Center in November of 2023. The recovery residence that I just mentioned at Nelson Park has been in operation since May of 2024. And even though we have been serving food at the Recovery Cafe location for the past few months, we officially opened as part of the Recovery Cafe Network just this last August. Some high-level features of what we're doing through the recovery residence, the Recovery Center and the Recovery Cafe. We've created a walk-in, low-barrier service center that's open five days a week. The majority of things we do there are at no cost whatsoever. People are invited to make appointments, of course, but we really are promoting ourselves as a walk-in center that anybody can come in at no cost, learn about our services, and see how they'd like to plug in. I think the secret to our success at the Recovery Center and the cafe is our employment of Peer Support Specialists. By having Peer Support Specialists always onsite, that person that walks in the door for the first time and isn't sure what they want with the center and the cafe is greeted with somebody that has personal experience with recovery, is friendly, is nonjudgmental, is approachable, and is extremely knowledgeable about things that we're doing at the center and resources available in the community. The other thing I want to just mention quickly is that through our relationships, and I've mentioned a couple of them already, people walking into the Recovery Center are able to access providers that come from the Saquamish Wellness Center, AMFM Healthcare Services, Kitsap Homes of Compassion, the Housing Solutions Center. In the past, we've worked with Fishline. KMH is welcome at our center. We're trying to create a place where somebody walking through the door has access to a wide variety of services and a supportive staff to assist them. Finally, and this is something that I hope Summer talks about in her comments. She taught me long ago when she walked through the door of City Hall that people do not live in services. And in order to be successful as a recovery center, we need to create a recovery community where people want to come back and be a part of eating, support groups, recovery circles, supporting each other over the long term, not just taking a service or accessing a service and being on their way. I wrote a little piece in the Kitsaps Sun a couple of days ago trying to explain why Paulsbow has leaned so heavily into recovery services. I won't go into all of the reasons why I think this is so important, but I think Mayor Erickson touched upon a few of them in her proclamation tonight. The fact that nearly 17% of people 12 and older are struggling with a diagnosable substance use disorder. And that's not just abusing drugs and alcohol on occasion, but have a diagnosed substance use disorder. And the vast majority of those people, as many as four out of five, are not getting the help and care that they need, suggests to many of us here in the city, led by Mayor Erickson's vision and leadership, that we must and can do more to help people that are interested in recovery. I'm very proud of our police department and their approach to enforcement and their understanding that enforcement has to be paired with giving people second chances and the opportunity to change. And I see so much of what we're trying to do here at the Recovery Center and Recovery Cafe is building on the essential service of policing by giving people the opportunity to come in and change their lives, if that's what they're ready to do. Funding. We just did our 2026 budget. I know City Administrator Gelder will be talking to you about it as budget sessions get underway. But this is a significant operation. And 2026, we'll be spending between $750,000 and $800,000 on the combined efforts of the Recovery Center and the Recovery Cafe. Just a quick breakdown of where that money comes from. None of it comes from the general fund. 65% give or take comes from outside grants that you know I'm trying to get year after year. And 35% of it, give or take, comes from a local affordable housing tax that City Council has decided is appropriately used up to a point to prevent homelessness as well as to provide housing. So City Council has decided with the authority of state law that up to 40% of the local funds that we collect for a housing sales tax can be used to keep people housed and prevent homelessness. And we use some of those funds for the Recovery Center. Okay, I'm not going to say much about this slide, but I just wanted to flash something up after I gave that astounding high number of $750,000 to $800,000. Are these needed services? Are we doing something that the community wants and values? And just some quick statistics. Since we've been open, since this is the end of 2023, we've helped over 400 unique individuals, the vast majority from the Paulsbow area. Of those 400 unique individuals, over 300 of them have wanted to engage with us as members, which means that they're coming back again and again to make use of our services, our meals, our support groups. Over 150 people have been assisted with court obligations, most from Paulsbow Municipal Court. Over 80 people have received mental health case management services onsite. Thank you, Haley. Over 150 people have connected to substance use services, mostly onsite, and that's largely thanks to our partnership with the Saquamish Tribe. We're housing people. We're helping people through their court arrangements. We're trying to work with law enforcement to make sure that folks that they encounter out in the field have a chance to go in and pursue recovery as an alternative to arrest and prosecution. I could talk to you about health outcomes, financial outcomes, community outcomes, but I think it's more meaningful if you hear from the staff themselves about what they think we're doing that's important. So I'm going to be quiet now and turn things over to the Operations Manager Carrie to say a few words about what we're doing at the cafe and center. Go ahead, Carrie.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, department heads, and citizens. It truly is an honor to be here. I got my first chance to speak to the council last year during Recovery Month, and I just come over from the Coffee Oasis, working with youth. And I've had the amazing opportunity to be promoted to Operations Manager since I started with the center and now the cafe. It truly is an honor to do this work in and with the city of Paulsbow. And I think I'm really grateful that Kim got a chance to just share the statistics of the wide range of successes that we've had over the last almost two years. But what I wanted to bring today is just an up-close view of what it's like each day in the center. And I want to start by saying that recovery is not the absence of struggle, but it's the presence of courage. And we watch men and women and young people come in and out of the center each and every day that we're open with courage to try to do something different than maybe they've tried before or maybe just the life circumstances that have been handed to them. Recently, we had a single dad come in out of money, out of food, out of gas, and really on the edge of losing hope. And within an hour, we were able to get him and also fighting for his sobriety and needing help with some medically assisted treatment. We were able to get him connected to MAT services with an agency that we work with in Bremerton. We were able to get him connected to Fishline in Kingston for a food bank. We were able to help with resources that we have through gift cards for gas. So within like 45 minutes, we were able to give this single dad hope, hope for his sobriety, hope for his family, and feel like that he has a safe place to come to when he's having a really bad day and he doesn't know where to turn. And we have peer support in the building that have lived experience to say, I've been where you're at, and how can we support? So it's not just about the resources we hand out, but it's about those 300 people that keep coming back as members. They feel seen. They know that this is a safe place they can come to and find hope. And we do that every day. Every day we're open, we see that change. And now having the Recovery Cafe open, we're seeing that more and more people feeling like they have a place to come to to get support for sobriety. And even if the one thing they needed that day was a shower, and you know how a shower can feel, right? When you've had a long day of work and you're hot and you're frustrated, and that shower feels like it washes everything away, even if that's the only thing that we did that day was have someone come in and say, come get a shower. And we have everything they need to have that shower. We get to do that in that center. We get to see lives change every single day. So when you think about the center, and if you haven't been in lately, to see that work happening, to see lives changing, please come. I hope you'll come on Friday to help paint the tree trunk. But this is the work we're doing. We're honored and so grateful to be part of it with the city. So thank you.
Okay. Hey, my name is Shu. I work with AMFM Healthcare, which is out of California. It's in Washington. It's in Minnesota. It's in Virginia. And so I'm a substance use disorder professional, and I've been doing this work for over 20 years. And so one of the things that I want to say is that, I mean, I've been doing this work for 20 years, and I have never seen this kind of support or buy-in from a city. And what is happening at the Recovery Resource Center and the cafe is miraculous, right? And I have talked to a lot of people that are in the field. And when I talk to them about what is happening here, they're like, what? I mean, that is just so amazing. And I think about like this as, what a model you guys have created. Everybody that has been a part of it, you know, and how to show that to other people, because people are interested, right? I know the people I've talked to are. And then I want to say, I was going to talk about something else, but I want to talk about this. So I run an anger management group, which is free for those who are relegated or required to do anger management and by the courts, which makes it accessible. I had a guy who came in who had something from 2021. But because he was homeless, he did not have access to do the class because it costs money. And so, of course, I got him taken care of. But last week, I had a gentleman come into the anger management class who is, you know, separated from his family, wanting to be back with his son, and is living in his car. And he got up and walked out about halfway through the class, and I met him outside during the break, and he said, I don't understand some of the information. I can't really read it, and I can't comprehend. And so I said, well, how about we just meet one-on-one? Would you like to just talk to me? And he said, I have a problem with my anger. And so I set up an appointment to just meet with him one-on-one so that he can talk to me about his anger rather than having him sit through something that he doesn't understand, making him feel like he didn't belong. And so that is... So the other thing that I do is the vocational stuff, which I really enjoy. And I've been working with some local employers. Town and Country is on board, Watson Furniture. And sending people to them, having them doing their resumes, having them do the work, though, right? I mean, that's important to me. Like, I'll sit next to you, but I want you to upload your resume, and I want you to fill out the questionnaire and that sort of thing. And really, what that is about for me is watching people's confidence in their abilities come back. Because so many people think they don't have any. And when I ask about job history and write down all the things that they've done, they have a lot of skills. And so I just want to thank you for allowing me to be a part of this because this is good work that we are doing. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Summer. I've had the opportunity to meet most of you. Really? I like to go last because I'm a crier. So the work that we're doing at the Recovery Cafe and the Recovery Resource Center is just so profound. September's a big month for me to celebrate recovery and have the mayor do a proclamation. I just so appreciate that and to be part of this community. I am a person in long-term recovery. So for me, that means I haven't put drugs or alcohol in my body for 17 years. When we talk about the cost of what this costs to run, I hope that we can also think about the fact that my son has a mother that's in recovery and that my grandchildren will never see me loaded. And the impacts that we're making on people right now are going to ripple through generations. And I just hope that's taken into account when y'all think about the cost, because you are really changing lives that you don't even know about yet. Ms. Carrie shared about all the great things that happen on the resource side of the center. I'm in charge of the cafe. I'm in charge of building that community where people feel like they belong to one another. Today was a really, yesterday I wasn't there, but somebody brought in strawberries because they wanted to contribute. So we had strawberry shortcake today as dessert. I also witnessed today in the cafe, somebody was short on gas money. And rather than having to take our resources at the other side of the center, members are loaning each other $5 for gas. And that's the really beautiful thing that starts happening when we start building community. People know each other when they walk in. They're greeted by their name. They feel special, and they feel like they belong. I know when I struggled in this community, I needed to know that somebody's seen my struggles and that they understood what I was going through, because there is so many layers of paperwork. There are so many things that get overwhelming when you're trying to get your life back on track. And the combination of the center and the cafe, I think, is really just setting people up for success. We are tapping into people's creativity also, and we've had a really cool mural installed on the wall. This is a community art installation. So I'm asking that City Council, Mr. Gelder, that you all, and Mayor, if you would like to come, and we think of you as our founding fathers, to get the trunk painted. Staff is going to paint the branches of the mural, and then members are each going to have an individual leaf as they become members and they see new growth happening in their lives. We're going to encourage them to put their names and words of affirmation on the wall. So it would mean a lot to us if you could join us for that. We are working on building a kitchen onsite so we can be open five days a week and just serve more people. I feel like we're going to just grow by leaps and bounds in the near future. But I am working also with the Salish Recovery Coalition to fundraise for our kitchen equipment. So we have some needs for an oven, a commercial refrigerator, ice machine, freezer, things like that. So this is a QR code that'll take you to the Salish Recovery Coalition donation page. If you want to spread the word on that, that's wonderful. And I think that's all. Thank you so much.
As you can see, it's much better when I let my staff talk. Are there any questions that any of you might have for peers, providers, operations manager? Please, councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, Fall, for being here. And thank you for doing what you're doing. It's really proud of the progress that our efforts have made. When we first started all these activities, I was fortunate enough to kind of, some of the early things when I joined council, and it's just been great to see it grow and blossom throughout the years here. So thank you all. My question is, I noticed on the statistics that we talk about 30 people housed. Were those people previously homeless, would you say? Then I'm assuming, is that... Okay, okay, that's wonderful. I mean, that's huge.
I would say that approximately 20%, between 18% and 20% of folks using the center are struggling either with homelessness or with staying housed. So we're working with a highly vulnerable population. And because of the connection that we have with our city-run Nelson House and Kitsap Homes Connection and the Housing Solutions Center, we're able to find choices for people that are looking for...
we're able to find choices for people that are looking for temporary and, and permanent, uh, residence. So that, that's one of the most impactful things that we're doing right now.
Right. So, uh, you, you're kind of running a risk inviting me to come paint. You've never seen me paint, but I, I will do my best to be there Friday. And, um, keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Kim, thank you for bringing the entire crew and thank you for being here. It's not easy. You guys did a great job. Kim mentioned she wrote a guest editorial. She put in a small editorial in the Kitsaps and it wasn't so small. It was pretty darn powerful. It got pink, picked up on LinkedIn and amplified across the country. And it reminds me to say that, well, let me go back to Mayor Erickson for a moment. It was just coming out of the COVID and she was a newly minted mayor. And we had the committee system going on and she came to council and she goes, I want to start a social services committee. Will you guys go along with that? And we said, say what? We're lucky to be paving streets. We have a voluntary separation program, et cetera, et cetera. And she stuck by that vision and it took council, what, a year, two or three to come around and share in that vision? So I, I thank you. And this results today because she found Kim Hendrickson on Beacon Bridge Island and took her across the Agate Passage Bridge and gave her a home in Paulsboro. And that is the, uh, you're all the fruition of that effort. So, uh, I'll close by saying it rotary last week, mayor. Coincidentally, it was the, uh, Fire Cares Program. Julie came from the, uh, district.
Kim started that too.
That's where I'm going to go. And I saw Josh sitting in the back there, the behavior navigator with police, let alone these programs. Those were some of the roots on the tree. I remember when, uh, the city of Seattle requested your clarifications on what to do. So we need to understand we're a small town, little city with a big impact. I remember accompanying Kim to Washington DC to present to the National League of Cities at his congressional cities conference. So thank you, mayor, for having the vision and staying with council till we could come around and see the value in the face of a financial recession nonetheless. So thank you.
Just a couple of comments and then I'll go to you, Britt. Local government has to do this kind of work. Um, we, um, government has traditionally farmed this out to nonprofits with very little accountability as to what happens with the funding and the efficacy of the programs that they develop. And, um, one of the things that local government does very well is it does accountability very well. We're accountable. Every week we sit in these chambers, we have, we're subject to the public records request and open books. We are accountable. And so many, so much of the money has filtered off to, in this particular arena, to social service groups that aren't accountable. They are well-intended. Please don't get me wrong. People working towards helping with these kinds of problems are always well-intended. But oftentimes they're not successful. And there is very little accountability with the funding or how the funding actually, um, implements change. And so the vision early on was this is a responsibility of local government. We have to do this. Now you're seeing more of that, more of that all the time now where cities are starting to be jumping in and doing this kind of work. But, um, it's absolutely imperative, um, because we take very scarce dollars and we are accountable with them. And we, um, in, and from my perspective, it's also a moral, moral imperative. You help your neighbor. You help your neighbor. Is, if you don't do that at local government, what does local government do other than help their neighbor? Now traditionally we've helped it with great roads, you know, really fabulous policing, you know, like, you know, environmental concerns. But, you know, we help our neighbors that aren't as fortunate as ourselves. I think it's a moral imperative and I always have. So, um, these guys are doing terrific work. And I thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. Okay. Questions for the, for the troops?
I don't really have any questions and I'm going to keep this kind of brief because like Summer, um, I am also a crier. But, um, I've been just so fortunate to, um, be involved and to watch this come together from some of the earliest days. And the cost, I mean, I know we all have to sit here and consider the cost, but your point is, is, um, an amazing one. We don't even know. We, we, it's not quantifiable, like what, what these life changes can mean, um, for generations. And so you all probably do some of the most with the least amount of money. And that's just amazing and we're very grateful. Um, and also I, I, I'll probably ask you on Friday more when I'm there, but, um, I love to cook and I've been led to believe that it's edible and I'd love to help with, um, sometime I'd like to help contribute. So, thank you.
Rick?
So unless I win Powerball tonight, I won't be there Friday because I have to be at work. If I do win though, it probably will be great. So, um, I wasn't kidding when I said about bragging on you all. I do it all the time. And, um, it's getting harder and harder to do in the sense of, I get, I, so I have friends in the south end of the county and they keep asking me about this arena. And it's getting harder and harder to brag on you all without making the other cities look bad. Um, because I keep getting asked, how does Polesville do this and the others aren't? How are you doing this with your resources when Bremerton and Port Orchard and, you know, can't? And I said, it's getting harder and harder to be generous to our neighbors at the same time to talk about how great what you all are doing, I guess. Um, so, um, if at any point you all want to connect with those same folks and brag yourselves, I'll, I'll connect you. Because like I said, I'm, I've, I've done it with the not making anybody else sound bad as much as I can. But, uh, but I, I do, I, I, I talk about it all the time because I hear a lot of folks talk about like, well, nobody's doing anything. Well, we are. Well, nobody's doing this. Yeah, we are. Um, and I mean, I'll keep interjecting it because as Becky said about a lot of things, like Nordic Cottage is one of them. If Polesville can do it, anybody can do it. Any city can manage this. So I'll keep bragging and I'll keep pushing. Um, but like I said, sooner or later, some other councils and mayors might get mad at me because you know, if I'm going to step on toes, but that's okay. Because like you said, we're doing good work. And, uh, yeah, there's things we can't measure. We don't know what the person you helped today doesn't do or doesn't go through because of what you all did. So keep it up and, uh, we'll, we'll talk more later.
Okay. One final word, if I could, for folks in the audience that might be watching or people here around the table, we are open for walk-ins Monday through Friday. We're an Upper Polesville Village. We love people walking in the door and just saying, what are you doing? Um, I had two of those folks come in this morning. So we warmly invite the public to come in to just come get help, come ask questions, come see how you can be a part of this. We are a community, uh, focused project and we, we really appreciate it when you come through the door. Thanks.
Uh, again, can you, can you share the, uh, Resource Center's phone number? If you, oh.
Three six zero nine three zero eight two seven five. Your ball.
And exactly where it is, folks don't know.
Where, where the center is, it's located in the Upper Polesville Village. Yeah, on Eighth Avenue.
It's, it's one nine three five one.
Yeah.
And for folks that aren't familiar with Upper Polesville Village, it's right above Centennial Park. We're neighbored by Sunrise Dental, the defensive driving school.
Uh, it's by the driving school. Right behind you.
Okay. Any more questions? God bless you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up we have Mr. Chapel and he's going to tell us about the building department. Alan?
Just a, a few words to, to kick off the team. Um, I wanted to let you know that, um, this is a team that works behind the scenes. Um, they don't typically come to council. They quietly manage all the building that happens in the city, all the inspections, all the code compliance. And they do it, um, with the, the form of service that I'm, I'm very, very proud of. Um, happy to welcome Alan Chapel here tonight, our deputy building official, along with his team, and he'll introduce his team.
And before you start, Alan, I also want to concur with what Diane has just said. These guys provide such an important function when we have the kind of development pressures we have right now. These are the guys that, that check and make sure it's being done right. And God bless you. So, thank you.
My goodness, what an introduction. That's a good one. Good evening. All right. Let's jump right into this here. Alan.
Why don't you introduce your colleagues first?
Yeah. So we have, uh, Faye Peaslee to my right here. She's our permit specialist. Um, so she is the one, um, everyone sees when they first come in. She's the front line. Um, so she manages the intake, um, routing, um, all of it. She answers a million questions a day. Um, and then to my left here, you got, uh, James Orson. He is a building inspector, uh, recently hired, uh, what, five months ago? Yep. So, um, he leads, uh, field inspections. He's on the field, um, almost five days a week now. Um, he's out there, um, checking buildings, structural, life safety, energy enforcement on, on every, every active permit that's out there and then every, uh, complaint that's coming through. So he's out there. Checking all these numbers right here. So yeah, just a, just a quick update on, um, what we look at or what we're doing for activities here. Um, so in, in twenty twenty-four here, we, uh, issued four hundred and sixty-six permits, um, eighty-eight, uh, certificate of occupancy is tied to those. And then, uh, where we're at this year was, uh, two hundred and ninety-three. Um, this is at the, uh, end of July. Um, is where these numbers stop right here. So we're at two hundred and ninety-three. And then seventy-seven COs issued for that. And then if you continue that projection for twenty twenty-five out for the rest of the year, we'll end up, uh, five hundred and two, uh, issued permits and then a hundred and thirty-two COs. Here, here's the team again. Then on top of that, so James, uh, just also passed his, um, residential building inspector exam, um, last month. So that was, that was a big deal. That was first certification there. Um, so it was a good deal. Um, and then we also use, um, Jeannie Vaughn, who is a retired, uh, building official from the city of Bremerton. Um, she helps with, um, overflow and then some complex, uh, projects and then, um, second checks. Um, so she'll actually be in tomorrow, uh, tomorrow morning. So we got a few, few department goals, um, we're looking at here to, we're focusing on this year, um, which is expanding, um, digital permit intake. Um, and then using some more digital tools on that front. Cleaning up some internal policies, handouts and procedures. And we're doing a lot of cross-training, um, with planning, engineering and public works. Um, since we're we're fairly young, um, in our, in our tenure, tenures here. Um, so we're trying to strengthen up our, our cross, uh, our cross-training. Um, and so with the, uh, the digital rights, we're all on, uh, blooming licenses. We're all working on that. We're, uh, projecting, um, probably by the end of October to have an iPad in the field. Um, that James will be able to digitally access the plans, um, which, which will be a big step. And then our website, we just got a new handout on the website, um, a really good informative handout, um, for do I need a permit? Um, it's, it's one Faye's been, been hammering out for, for a little bit. We finally got that one up there and, and it looks really nice. So it's a really good thought, a really good spot for people to stop, um, and, and, and check it out. Skip the head of that one. Skip that one. Paperless. Paperless is a goal. Um, we're, we're striving towards that. Um, that, that just speeds up a lot of the process. Um, so we are, like I said, we were, we're working on digital plan reviews. Um, so we still require hard copies. Um, it's, it's a slow process. It's slow. So we're, we're working, um, with some record retention requirements and figuring out what we need to maintain, uh, to stay in compliance. Um, ball's still going towards paperless. Level of service, um, it's probably our bread and butter, um, right? That's kind of what we're, what we're known for is, is how fast we can get permits turned around, how fast you can get an inspection scheduled here. That's what we're known for. Um, and that's what we're trying to maintain and, and that's what we haven't lost, um, through staff turnovers, through changes, um, through through workflows. We haven't lost that, um, which is really good. We're really proud of that. Um, and so we're working to keep that and make that stronger, um, and solidify that. Um, so we're working on internal tracking. And we, we keep Jeannie Vaughn on, on the side for when, uh, surges happen. Um, so we're just, we're constantly monitoring that.
Alan, Alan, when do you, when do you call Jeannie in? Is it, is, does she do some of, some particular big things or specific projects or, or you just when you kind of start, are you starting, the wave is getting too high and you realize it?
It's a little bit of all of it. Um, so if a complex project comes in, um, I'll call her and then if, if the workload is just heavy and, and you have, usually it happens, you have a lot going on and then you'll have something complex come in on top of that and, um, and you'll know. Um, and that, that's part of the working on the timelines to make sure we're keeping everything really clear so we can see.
Changing it. You're really staying in that four to six week window. That's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's absolutely amazing.
And this just here is a kind of a recap of the permit activities, um. And so, yeah, we're, we're just under an eight percent increase, um, from what we're, what we're projecting for twenty twenty-five from twenty-four. Um, so it's steady. It's staying steady out there. And then that's eighteen hundred inspections, um, in, in twenty twenty-five already. Um, and that's, that's quite a few. So it's busy. It's a good problem though.
Do you guys know where that is? That's Liberty Bay Vista. Yeah. That's right above Johnson Parkland.
All of these pictures taken by James, uh, in the field. Yeah. That's the end of this. Anyone has any questions?
Um, on that first, uh, the first slide with the grass, um, could you go back to that? So it's a little, this, okay, you got actually year-to-date and projected. It's issued. Okay. Okay. Uh, I, I figured out what confused me. Sorry. One thirty-two is greater than eighty-eight, but the bar is smaller. And then I guess it's a ratio of, is it a ratio of five oh two? And okay.
Yep.
I was like, something's wrong with this and it's hurting my head.
Yeah.
Okay. That, um,
It is. Yeah, it, it matches the, for the year. Yeah. I see what you're looking at though. The ratio matches.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
We have Gary and then we have Rick.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. Thank you all for being here and, and thanks for doing what you do. Uh, uh, I came to the counter recently and Faye was very helpful in helping me. So I appreciate that. And, uh, you know, we, we don't stop becoming citizens just because we're on city council, right? You know, so, so, uh, I have a comment and then a question. Um, the comment is, um, I just want, uh, I continually hear from people in our community, uh, contractors, particularly developers, uh, real estate folks, um, how much they enjoy doing projects. how much they enjoy doing projects in the city of Paulsboro because our staff is so responsive. And I want you to know that, I want to pass that along to you. I'm hoping that you hear that. I know you probably hear a lot of complaints, but hopefully you hear some good news sometimes. So thank you for doing what you're doing and for, you know, the thorough work and the timely turnaround that you're providing. It's being noticed, so you know. And I guess my question is, is there anything, as a department, any tools, resources within reason that you don't have that council, we're going to be putting together in the new budget soon? Or is, do you need anything from us, I guess? Is there anything that, and if you can't think of anything now, please feel free to let Diane know, and I'm sure that'll get into the budget process. Okay?
Yeah, we'll go through the proper processes with that.
I was gonna say, we're not getting that gigantic truck. No, we're not doing this.
Just send your request to Gary once he wins the lottery.
Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation because kind of like what I said last time, I hear a lot about, oh, this is all broken. And I was actually able to use the numbers you presented and say, well, not in Paulsboro, and push back. And so I got to brag on you all too. So it was perfect timing. Because I hear from folks in other areas about how all permits take forever and nothing ever gets done, and I can't do this because I actually told one friend, like, well, your business is in the wrong place, clearly. If you were in Paulsboro, this wouldn't be a problem. But yeah, it was perfect timing because I took a picture of this graph and I said, well, here's evidence that you're wrong and it's being done right in our city. And I just said, yeah, the digital, moving digital, you know, that is a very laudable and complicated goal. I appreciate it. In my day job, I've been working on President Obama's 2019 goal for years now, and we're not there. So, yeah, that is a complicated thing. And, you know, since you think you got it licked, then that software doesn't work anymore and you got to move to new stuff. And so, good luck with that. And like Gary said, let us know because, yeah, what you think works now won't work anymore because software moves on while you're trying to get to that where you're going to work it. So.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to echo both Councilman McVeigh and Councilman Eckert, both at your department and the planning department, which isn't represented tonight, but I'll count on City Administrator Gelder to carry the word. I have been directly approached, attending KBA or KCAR. Kitsap Building Association, Kitsap County Association of Realtors, individual developers in our community, Mayor, that the attitude they run into in Paulsboro, both at the planning desk and at the building desk, is one of can do, get it done, not throwing the book at you. But if there's a problem, we are here to help. We're going to work this through with you. That is not what's happening in other jurisdictions. It's much more rigid. You're on your own. Come back with a complete permit next time and we'll look at it. Get back in line. All of those things. So number one, great job, both planning department, building department, if you can, they, City Administrator Gelder. And then my question is a council question of the mayor. On and off for the last 10-plus years, we've inquired, expressed enthusiasm, realized it can or can't be done within the budget for a code compliance officer. So I'm going to ask the mayor, what's the overlap with the work they're doing if we were to hire a code compliance officer without respect to law enforcement and the other functions, just building?
There's really, there's, there is some overlap, but most of it, code compliance is, like for instance, we heard somebody complaining bitterly about the quality of a dumpster tonight. Okay, that's really code compliance. When blackberries grow over somebody's fence and are attacking the sidewalk, that's code compliance. A lot of, a lot of the code compliance stuff comes in as complaints that we get, but they're not really building, you know, they're not really building. You know, when we have 50 gazillion signs for stump digger, gun show, whatever, all littering our city, that's code compliance. That's not what these, they're doing code compliance, but they're doing really intricate code compliance. Okay? So that's really what the difference is. Pam, did you have a question?
So for the person that might not be knowledgeable and what requires a permit, what is the pathway or what is used to educate folks that you just can't put this structure up in your yard? You need to have a permit. So for someone that doesn't even know, and then I'm assuming you might maybe experience some information sharing that, you know, hey, my neighbor put this up and I don't think they have a permit for it. How do you first educate? And then how do you go about addressing something that might be in place in a, hopefully a supportive way that doesn't impact someone financially? They spent money on something, put a structure up or did an addition or something and there was, they weren't aware of the steps that they need to take?
Um, well, I was gonna say, we do have a lot of handouts online. A lot of times when people come in, like their first, the first person they may talk to is planning, actually, because they're trying to put something up in their backyard. They don't know if they can. Tiffany does a really good job at explaining setbacks and where they can put things and locate things. So Tiffany and the planning department is also a really good resource to where they start. We also, like Alan said, we just put up our, do I need a permit? Which we sort of grabbed from other jurisdictions that also have that on there. That is also available on our website. It does kind of give a clear, clear-ish picture of like what needs a permit, what doesn't need a permit. I'm also learning a lot about like our building codes. And we try to educate people on our building codes and what is next, like what you can, what information you can get through them to know if you need permits and what, you know, your steps are to get your permit. But yeah, if you look on our building site, it says, do I need a permit? It has a good little list of things that you do and do not need, you know, to get a permit.
Thank you for sharing that. I'm sure it's quite the process to navigate and I really appreciate. I, I will say the myriad or the mountain of permits that you navigate. I do know that, you know, I was tethered to a permit that was submitted. And I'm like, we need a permit for that. They were like, yes, we need a permit for that. So, so your timeliness is very helpful for our project to move forward.
So any more questions? Good job. Good job. You know, we couldn't do it without you. Okay. Good job, really.
Okay, next up, we have the 11th Avenue Sewer Extension and Gateway Sewer Rehab Project. And this is Charlie.
Good evening, council. Oops. I'll try and make this pretty quick for you guys tonight. Okay, so this is a kind of two minor sewer projects that cropped up in the last month or so that were pretty unanticipated, but there's a little bit of urgency there, which is why we're bringing it forward now as opposed to next year on our CIP. So these are, neither of these projects are currently on our sewer CIP. And they're both relatively small-scale projects. And we think that kind of packaging them together towards the end of the year will allow us to put together a competitive bid package. So there's two different locations. One's on 11th Avenue. And this is the 11th Avenue, which is off of Lincoln near Safeway, not off of Hostmark, kind of on the way to the schools. And the other one is on Gateway Church's property, just near the Nordic cottages project. So the first one's Gateway Sewer Rehab, and this is the 1916 plat map of Paulsboro. It's an old town. And unfortunately, so just to kind of orient you guys, this is the Gateway Church. This is our Nordic cottages project. And this is the sewer line that we're talking about. As part of the Nordic cottages, we had to replace and relocate this sewer. And this portion here, which is on Gateway's property, is found to be in pretty poor condition. And so we dug through, and we always assumed it only serves Gateway. We assumed it was their sewer, and so that's kind of the first answer. But turns out there's some documents from the 1940s, 50s. It's public sewer. There used to be a sewer main that ran through there, so it's an easement. So it is our issue to fix, unfortunately, which isn't great. It's had some, it's clay, concrete, you know, probably 50 years old or 70 years old. It's plugged a number of times and caused some backups in the gateway and the school. And currently Public Works has been root cutting and jetting it about monthly for the last few months to prevent sort of issues. And so there's a little sense of urgency because it is kind of a maintenance burden. And it's only about 100 feet, but it's under a concrete parking lot and there's some complications, unfortunately, so.
Do you anticipate doing this fall? Are you going to do this? Are you going to be in the ground pretty soon?
Yeah, so that's the idea behind both of these projects is they're fairly simple and straightforward, and we would like to move forward quickly.
Okay.
And just kind of alleviate the maintenance burden now that we've kind of confirmed it is ours. It's a headache that Public Works is dealing with.
We need to fix it. All right, thanks, Charlie.
And if you're looking at, you know, a cost of about $60,000 to $80,000 for the construction of this one. So, you know, small scale, but still needs to be done. The 11th Avenue Sewer, so this is kind of orienting you, coming down Lincoln, there's 11th Avenue here, the Powder Hill Development, and then Safeway here. To be honest, I didn't realize that we didn't have sewer on 11th or 10th Avenue over there, but we don't. Yeah, so these houses were plotted in the 60s before there was sewer on Lincoln Road. I think the sewer on Lincoln was in the 80s or the 90s and was just never extended into either of these developments. So kind of what spurred this project is the house at the very end of 11th has a failing septic system. And so the health district reached out and basically said, you know, it's a small lot, it's wooded, it's on a hill. Going to be challenging for them to reinstall their septic. And they do have a solution because they just happen to own the vacant lot across the street. So they could potentially do that. But we kind of looked at it and talked to the health district, and all of the septic systems up there are like 50-plus years old and are likely to begin failing. And there's some pretty limited options. And unfortunately for the residents, like only one of their septic is failed. So it's not like they're in a place to, you know, combine forces and put this project and move it forward. So there's some limited options there. And we evaluated this just internally, and I think the best option and the one we're bringing forward to you guys is to actually move forward, bite the bullet, install sewer on 11th Avenue and kind of prevent, you know. Normally, we don't install sewer for, you know, in existing neighborhoods and existing roads because we rely on development to do that. But in this case, there's no development potential. It's cost prohibitive for an individual homeowner. It's a pretty small project for us. And the old septic systems are a risk and they will start failing. And if you drive up 11th, there's some really nice trees. They're really tall. It's an older, established neighborhood. And it'd be a shame to see all that kind of cut down to try and fit some septics in there. So we're looking at kind of an estimated cost in the $300,000 range for construction. So again, lot for one homeowner, but relatively small project for the city. And there's kind of, for the 11th Avenue Sewer specifically, there's two, excuse me, a couple of relevant codes that allows us to assess a front footage fee to kind of recoup some of that cost so that we're basically placing the burden that would have been part of there when it was plotted and developed. They would have paid for that sewer as part of their house when it was built, but it allows the city to kind of recoup a little bit of that. So you know, unfortunately, wasn't there when the houses were built, so that's what it is.
This is almost my favorite topic of the evening. This is so rich and imbued with Paulsboro history. It's ridiculous. Let me start with putting it in a modern framework. Until the water extension up north Viking for that, was it at that time box light? They were building, we never led with infrastructure anywhere in the town. It was up to the developer or the proposer. We don't lead. That was the history of this town. That water extension was pretty controversial for the city to expend money to create that development where we wanted to see it in a way that it fit. And then on sewer, I just, so let me put it delicately. Norwegians that founded this town were very practical people and were very conscious of money. And when the city became a municipality in 1907, it was for the sake of sewer that drove the city into existence. And the first action in the first council meeting, which was considered very liberal and possibly a waste of money, was to extend the sewer outflow pipe from the high water mark to the low water mark. The history of sewer in this town tracks the history of our community.
So I guess one other, oh, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
I love Ed's enthusiasm and I think he's right. I think this is overflowing with history. So my question, I can go back one slide, the 50% frontage fee. Just rough estimate, I know this is just kind of hypothetical at the moment. Rough estimate, that would be probably greatly, much smaller than getting a new septic installed, right?
Yeah, so I think if you have a very basic septic with the kind of basic system, you're probably looking at 25, 30 grand for a new system on a lot that's small with a house and a bunch of trees on a hill, you're looking at quite a bit more. And you're looking at kind of probably a pressurized system. And I, to be honest, I don't have a number there. But it's expensive. I mean, sewer is expensive here. It's expensive to connect to. It's expensive to install.
And how many homes will this impact?
So there's seven houses up there that are currently built and one vacant lot. And so it's a total of eight potential houses or, you know, seven houses in one potential.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's, it's, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, so that's okay. So, yeah, we're going to put the line in, but they're each going to have to connect to it and that'll be as they need to or choose to and at their cost.
Yes, so the way it works in our code is once sewers becomes available, which means within 200 feet, you're assessed a monthly fee for not connecting. And the way you get out of that is submitting annual septic reports to verify that your septic is still in good working order. Because as soon as that starts to, you know, show failure or an issue, then the health district tells you time to connect.
Okay. And then for the gateway one, you said you anticipate wanting to try to tackle that this fall soon as possible. What kind of impact do we then, do we think that's going to have on the school operations and on the farmers market?
Yeah, it's, it's good. I mean, I think we'll have to time it a little bit to avoid both of those. It is a very short, relatively simple construction, like you have to sock up the road, you know, break up the concrete. But the actual installation of the sewer is probably less than a week's worth of work for, you know, a contractor who does this type of work.
Okay.
And obviously, we got to keep sewer flowing into the school and we got to coordinate with them.
Yeah, I'm just thinking there's probably not any big time. There's no big break in the fall that you could use when school's going to be out. So, yeah.
So it'll be disruptive for a short duration, but kind of.
Have you reached out to the homeowners yet, Charlie, and told them that this is going on?
So the homeowner who has the failing septic has talked to some of their neighbors. And I kind of was holding off on sending a letter to the property owners until I got kind of direction from the council that we do want to proceed with this. And I think there's kind of two other things that I wanted to mention. One of them is we just wrapped up the, or the county just wrapped up the La Molo Shoreline Pipe Project. And that came in about a million dollars under what we had budgeted. And that, kind of the second piece of it is where the septics and the houses are located on 11th Avenue is upstream of Dogfish Creek. And so it's kind of, we've spent, you know, the city's invested millions of dollars to improve the water quality and it'd be, you know, septic is one of the main causes of water degradation. And so it's, you know, it kind of fits hand in hand there.
You mentioned another street there. 10th through 12th.
10th Avenue.
There's another one up there that's in the same condition.
It is. I would say the one thing about 10th Avenue is there is a vacant lot that will be developed. And that's going to be a requirement of the development to install sewer.
Okay, so it's not as urgent a situation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I have a question. If you're going to reach out to these folks, you know, they might want to do road improvements since you're gonna dig everything up anyway, right? Um, this might be a good time for road improvements, even things like sidewalks and the possibility of an LID, not saying the city's gonna pay for this, but you know, they might want to go ahead and do those kind of improvements. I just kind of want to, you know, flag that, I mean, getting sidewalks and a better road out of it might be something they might want to pay for.
Yeah, and we are planning to uh do the our standard pavement repair, which will be a twenty foot wide overlay um for the road to kind of bring the, instead of having a patch.
Right.
Over path.
You're gonna put an overlay on.
Yes, we're gonna do an overlay at a minimum as part of this project. Um, and when we meet with the property owners, if they're interested in pursuing other improvements, that's the discussion we can have. Um, so, yeah. And then my next kind of um next steps is bringing forward a budget amendment. Um, this, you know, probably the next couple of council meetings. Um, what will confirm the costs and what we need for um survey and and CAD work and everything, but our intent is to do the design in-house and rely on a survey company to do the CAD workforce and put a plan set together, but we'll do all the design work.
Okay.
Charlie, do we have a handle on other areas of the town that might benefit as well? Do we have any kind of survey or inventory?
Are you talking about areas that are currently unsued? Um, I haven't done an extensive search, but I can tell you it's more of the um kind of fringe areas like Little Valley or uh, yeah, Little Valley is an example, up kind of towards the um the pump track there. Um, there's no sewer on that road, but you know, there's a potential development that would bring it up. Um, and then, you know, um. I think out towards, I mean, the developments on the northeast, northwest corner of the city have kind of extended sewer to that realm, so I think I think we're in pretty good shape. Um, this is a fairly rare case right in the middle of town, so.
Go ahead Pam. What is the front footage fee?
So it's in addition to the connection fee. Um, and so n- normally, um, if sewer was installed with the development, the cost of that improvement would be rolled into the cost of the house. Um, but because we're coming back later, the city has the ability to, and installing infrastructure to benefit existing homeowners. The city has a um ability to assess a fee to recoup some of that cost. Um, so that we're not, you know, because development generally pays for development and so we don't want to put the burden of this project on the taxpayers a hundred percent to bring sewer to eight citizens, so. It's just a tool that's available to us that's in our code.
Okay, so you'll be coming back to us for formal motions?
Yeah, for a for a budget amendment.
Okay.
Um, we'll bring it back and either on the business agenda or the consent agenda, if you got whatever you prefer, but um.
Super.
Yes.
Any further questions for Charlie? Okay.
Ed's question about other areas, is there any other area that you're aware of that's that's close to this critical tipping over into front band that would be worth also bundling? Like, will we have any savings if there was another street like this around?
I don't think so. I mean, I'd have I'd have to think of, think about it and consider that, but off the top of my head, no.
Okay, I'm just thinking if we're gonna try to grab a couple of small projects, if there's another one that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, it might make sense.
Yeah, um, I'll I'll put some thought into it, but nothing jumps immediately to mind, but, you know. Cool, thank you guys.
Thanks Charlie. Okay, uh, let's see, we've got one more and this is uh Administrator Gelder and he's gonna talk to us about HB bill HB twenty fifteen Public Safety Funding Review and Discussion.
Good evening and thank you for having me back and I will just a short presentation and would like to get this shared and that one. There we go.
Almost done.
So this was one of those topics. Still, there we go. Um, this was one of the topics when uh Deb and Larissa were here last week at the last council meeting, talking about potential revenue options. As you know, the legislature passed House Bill twenty fifteen, which basically created a new avenue, new couple of avenues for funding for public safety. So it basically set up two uh avenues, one being a grant funding. Um, they appropriated, the legislature appropriated a hundred million dollars for three-year period. Uh, with a, really with a focus on the hiring, retaining and training of new police officers and corresponders. What's interesting is when you dig a little bit deeper, uh, those grants, they do have a prioritization of how, what they will actually fund. So the priority will go to grant applications to start co-responsor, co-commu- or community immersion law enforcement programs. Second priority will go to agencies with existing co-response. So right from the beginning, we're sort of a second priority because they want to get more programs up and running. And the other piece, which is uh pretty key, is a sales tax, which allows uh local legislative juris- legislative bodies to actually councilmanically adopt a one-tenth of one percent sales and use tax with very broad uh uses allowed. So the new local option sales tax um can be enacted councilmanically through June of twenty twenty-eight. Um, it is a permanent uh tax that would be added, um and it's also stackable. Of probably a show of hands, how many people ever thought of the term stackable? Um, but what it means in short is that we as a city can enact it. The county can enact it, but the county can enact it for the entirety of the Kitsap County, including incorporated areas. So what that would do is that would take our one-tenth and add their one-tenth, so it would actually be stacked.
Two-tenths.
Um, and of course, uh, it does not require any sharing of those tax revenues uh with jurisdictions.
Chair.
But in order to be eligible to uh initiate and execute the tax, you have to be eligible for the grant. So that's really driving a lot of the the prerequisites that you need to actually move forward. Um, so if, also in terms of the the sales tax and it taking into effect, so if the council uh acted on it, um, the Department of Revenue actually requires seventy-five days advance notice. Um, so from action, they won't, they'll only do sales tax changes three times a year. Uh, January one, April one or July one, so you just backdate that seventy-five days to come up with the appropriate date of notification. So the, again, the broad use of sales tax, uh domestic violence services, public defenders, diversion programs, reentry programs, reducing homelessness or improving behavioral health, community placements for juvenile defenders, uh and again, that community outreach, alternative response, mental health crisis responders as well. But in addition to that, um, the even broader use of these dollars could go to support emergency management. Uh, it can go to environmental hazard mitigations, which I have a little bit harder time kind of getting my head around the nexus between the sales tax and that, but security personnel, community outreach assistance. Um, and again, so with those alternative responses. So what this might mean for Paul'sville residents or shoppers, um, if the council moved forward with this, would it be an additional uh ten cents on every one hundred dollars of purchase? Approximately, um, based on historic revenues, about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual resources for, to support the prioritized uses uh in the city. Um, it would be collected from all patrons and not just local residents, right? So it's anybody coming into Paul's Bow to Home Depot, et cetera, they would be contributing uh that one-tenth of one percent. And given that our current sales tax rate is nine point three, uh, this would go to nine point four. But if if the county chose to enact it, it would uh potentially stack it to become nine point five.
Rob.
Mm-hmm.
On the sales tax, uh, do you know where that puts us competitively with the other shopping centers in the county?
Well, we are already ahead of, I think we're one-tenth of one percent ahead of everyone else already. We are the highest in the in the county, yes. Mm-hmm. So uh what are the questions that Councilmember McVeigh had uh the last time he met was sort of what are other jurisdictions uh pondering relative to this? So I did have an opportunity to reach out some to some of the other jurisdictions. So Jefferson County is uh deferring this until uh late this year or uh next year. Um, because they actually have a transportation benefit district on the ballot this November, so they're just pushing it off a little bit. Uh Bainbridge is kicking it around. Um. Their uh city manager indicated that they really would be focused on trying to increase the level of staffing for their police department. Uh, Clallam County is looking at it as potentially one of their twenty twenty-seven uh budget assumptions, so probably enacting it next year as part of that. Um, they however, don't currently meet all of the grant requirements. So they would be have to be able to achieve that prior to being able to enact it. Um, Port Townsend is not looking at it this time, Gig Harbor is considering it and uh Port Orchard had has not come up uh with their council for discussion at this point in time. So that is sort of the the general synopsis of what everybody in the the area is thinking of. Um, and then, so really what I thought of it kind of boils down to three kind of key questions. Um, is there support or would there be the support from council for moving forward uh with consideration of of enacting this uh sales and use tax? Uh, if so, what's the the timing that you'd like to see? It doesn't have to happen right away. And if you wanted to move forward, then I think we would find time to sort of have that conversation around what would be those prioritized uses that you would like to see for that sales and use tax or those revenues. So I I put down a recommendation here because this is not an urgent thing that has to happen right away. Um, but if it's supportive, if you are in support, um, I would suggest that we bring it back to a a council retreat in December or January to actually um begin having that conversation about prioritization uh and potential uses. And then we could incorporate, enact it next year and incorporate it into the next biennial budget of our twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Uh, that's would be my my recommendation, but uh none of that happens if you don't say, yes, this is something we should pursue.
Gary and then Ed.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation, Rob. Um, very helpful. Um, so um, I guess a comment and then a question. My comment is, um, I'm gonna sort of assume that since we have kind of already led the way with um um navigator programs and so forth. And those are gonna be the first um jurisdictions to receive grant funds. There are chances of actually receiving grant funds could be fairly low. So that's, would you agree with that assumption or?
I have no basis to to agree to that.
Okay, all right. Well, then I, but I'm still gonna assume it. Okay. Oh, thank you. I just wanted to see. And then um, I um, you listed um some of the potential uses for the local sales tax, broad use of the sales tax and such as uh domestic violence services, public defenders, diversion programs, reentry work for inmates, reducing homelessness, community placements, community outreach. Can you also use it to hire more police officers?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see that listed, so I just wanted to ver- verify that.
It was on a, the earlier slide, that was sort of the impetus behind it.
I got you. Okay, all right. Well, I I do like your recommendation of uh of um uh incorporating it into a council retreat and something for consideration as part of the new biennial budget. Thank you.
And then Rick.
Thank you, Becky. Um. I think Gary clarified it pretty well. I'll just add, um. Let's assume police is a main target of this for a moment. We just heard the presentation tonight about a very extensive program in our Health Human Services Housing Department. Um, I know when we enacted the B and O tax, we were able to use part of that money to justify and move ahead with an officer or two, which I know this council is very proud of taking the lead on. I I think I have a concern about our Housing, Health and Human Services Department because so much of it is grant funded and depending on one-time sources, as adept as they have been and the Finance Department with grant funding. I know that part of the housing tax, uh, um, Kim did a good job of clarifying, is going to the department. But I think we need to, i- if that department's gonna have longevity and assurity, we need more props under it, more pillars of dedicated funding, if you will. And so I would like to see part of this money used to help prop up the longevity of that program and not just purely taking that dive on law enforcement or or such.
Okay.
Just my input.
We have Rick and then Doug, you keep looking at me. Do you have a comment? Yeah, Rick. Go ahead.
Um, just to your point, Gary, I'd just say the, um, so the director of the Police Academy is the one who's been tasked legally to disperse this money. Um, she at the conference, she talked about this and she did say her intent was to spread it as far and wide as possible. So um she was, it was gonna be contingent on how many agencies applied, more than any other criteria. So her her goal was to give it to get as many cops hired as she could. So I I take that as kind of the the benchmark to work towards, but um. Uh. So Becky and Rob know, I I I did some extensive thinking on this and I sent them a very long thought on how we could use this money um to the to the degree of if we use this money for this and we can use this money for this and take money and so shift, shift funding the police from the B and O to this. So I laid out a whole long, much deeper than I should have because it's below policy and I acknowledged that in the first sentence that I went way beyond. Well, because once I started to think.
Not offended.
Once I started to think about it, it just spiraled. Um, but it, like you said, we we have a lot of funding sources that are kind of all sort of touching and tying into this. And I think a retreat's a good way to look at this because we have the cameras, we have the B and O tax, we have, um. I really, this is what I'm missing, my laptop, because I had all this written down. Uh, um, but I, yeah, so there's a lot of things we got kind of going into this. As far as support, the one thing that I I I don't like adding more taxes, I'll just say that from the beginning. But the one thing I like about this tax, if we were to add it, is the point that Rob made on the slide is that this is not just paid by our residents because it's sales tax. This is paid by anyone who who lives, shops, you know, uses Pulse Bow for a lot of ways. And a lot of the things that this money will end up going to one way or another is those are the folks that are using those services. We talk a lot about like Bonn and three oh five, how many cars go through that intersection every day that don't, are not folks who live here. And our officers are responding to that, our our Public Works is responding, so. We're a service city to many that do not live here. And by it being a sales tax, it's now helping to fund some of this. It's spreading that out to the folks that are using it, not just hitting our residents once again for those services. Um, and so I think I I think that's probably the right thing to do and and let's have folks that want to enjoy Pulse Bow and all of it have, help pay for some more of these things. So um. And if the county does end up adding, we know the history of the countywide one-tenth of one percent taxes, we know the history of us getting that money back into this jurisdiction. It's not been great. And so if they do add it, I I don't know that we can count on seeing a ton of that money coming back to Pulse Bow. I I would, I think we need to look to our own first. And if the county does that, then we will lobby as hard as we can to get our share, but um, I wouldn't hold our breath on that. So that's my thoughts.
Okay, um. So I'm not seeing any other comments. Oh, Doug, go ahead.
Yeah, I I um spent some, I had questions for Deb, but she literally ran out of the building today. Uh, and I couldn't, I couldn't, she's she's quicker than I than I when it comes to questions. No, um, I'll, I'll, I'll get, I'll get Deb. And um, I think, yeah, I think a retreat is the right place for this. Um, I'm pretty heavily against increasing sales taxes because it's the most, we just have one of the most regressive self, the tax systems in the in the country and but um the the broad use, the hitting our heavy retail and visitors. in the country and but the the broad use, the hitting our heavy retail and visitors equally with our residents. And then our services, I think, looking at how we spend our money, in my opinion, we're we're probably in the top one percent in the country of cities of how we how we perform with our dollars, revenue spent. So I'm more open to it than than I would be anywhere else in the world probably. And and digging through all of our our revenue and our sales tax structure right now and where money is going from one project to another. And having a broad use and what that allows for, and then taking more narrow uses or other things and being able to pare them down in certain proportions that would that would make sense. If it helps their citizens and reduces financial load on on our visitors and our citizens. But yeah, a lot of thinking going on and I look forward to a retreat or a council meeting on this topic.
So we'll just schedule this up for a retreat either like December, January, or something like that?
I'm kind of hoping December, if it works with council calendars, because I know there could be some travel, et cetera. But I really would like to have it sync up in terms, it's, you know, the old adage, you know, you know what you value based on how the the checks you write in your checkbook. It's the same kind of thing, I think, for the the city and having that conversation around values and prioritization is really important because it's also going to dovetail what with what your leadership team will be doing as well of having that conversation about values such that that drives then sort of the the next biennial budget.
Right.
Development, we need to know what council values and wants to prioritize so that we can get to work trying to make that happen.
That that sounds good to me and Rob, I'm assuming we're not talking in terms of the retreat, we wouldn't be focusing just on the sales tax. It'd be more holistic in terms of revenue and okay.
It's time for, you know, we're gonna have change in government here, it's time for some priorities as to, you know.
Okay.
What you guys want to do.
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, and I I think because the, because the director said she's going to base a lot of her decisions on how many submissions she gets. The sooner we have an idea, probably the better. Also, like Ed, you mentioned, you know, Kim's, Kim's department runs a lot on grants. If we end up deciding to do this and decide to go for the grant and looks like we're to get the grant, that can take some pressure off how much, how many grants Kim has to go for, because some of this money can support that, that's how the law always ended up being written. So I think sooner is the better.
All right, so anything more on this? Okay, so then we're just going to move on to the next, good job, Rob, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Doug's still online, I didn't know if he had any.
See him. Yeah, I can't, I can't see him, so I.
Oh, there he is. Nope, okay, I gotta represent.
Yeah, I can't see, I, yeah, there he is. Doug, do you have any comment? We, this is the first time I've seen you since we came down to the the tables here.
I I'm still here listening to all the wonderful dialogue.
Okay.
But no, I support putting this as part of our broader reach of revenue sources and how do we prioritize and stack everything together? It seems like a good approach.
Thanks, Doug. A sale safe. Okay, so we're just going to keep chunking right along, I think we've covered this one, okay? All right, and so the last is questions and concerns of the council, future agenda items, et cetera, anything we need to, Brett, go ahead.
On the topic of retreat, I think January makes sense because we will have a different mayor.
That's right.
And a new council member.
Yeah, yeah, I think January is a better time for the retreat because you're going to have different people here, so. Unless you want to hear my nonsense all over again. Okay, any questions and concerns to the council, future, anything? Okay, continued public comments. If you have a comment for the council, please step to the podium, you have three minutes and state your name for the record. Public comment. Okay. Mayor and council member comments. Go ahead, Doug.
Sale safe, Doug Newell.
Yeah, sale safe, have fun. Any other comments? All right, then I.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Goodbye, Doug.
Bye, Doug.
Goodbye, see you next week, maybe in person.